Is Christine not gonna be here?
No.
She's not coming?
Vacation.
Oh, so it's just the three of us.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
I thought you were asking if we were.
Welcome to the City Council Workshop, June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is just gonna be a workshop. I am gonna ask you to stand and say the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands for a nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as well.
May standing for a silent prayer or a moment of silence, whatever you prefer. Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Powers excused. Councilwoman Bennington?
Here.
Councilman Powers?
Yeah.
City Manager Erby?
Here.
City Clerk Lotte present.
Okay.
Seems like we're missing parts.
We will turn it over to two presentations, discussion, two A utility rate, and report from Raffiella.
So we have...
Do you wanna say something first, Mr. Erby?
Nope.
Okay.
Are those things to pass out to us?
We have Henry Thomas here with Ref Tellis to present that.
Wait a minute, we need these.
They didn't get these?
No, we didn't get them.
Oh, I sent all of those the email.
It's in there. Well, I didn't... Yeah, I would sort of like to...
If he sent an email, I ain't got it.
Mine didn't come up. I checked.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I can read it off the screen. That's fine, man.
I like to make notes on that. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, sir, or go ahead, Bridget, whoever's first.
Bridget starts. Yeah, does the introductions.
Good evening, or good afternoon. I'm gonna present to you tonight the findings for this year's rate review. I'm gonna, before I do that, I'm gonna give you some insight into the strategy that we're taking. So this year, I would characterize the strategy that we'd like to do as to take a pause. So we've been increasing rates fairly significantly now for multiple years. And this year, you're in fairly good position financially. Staff would like to take the opportunity to assess some things in a little more depth, look at infrastructure needs going forward a little more carefully, look at your new ops facility and how that's gonna get accomplished. And, you know, do we phase it? Do we finance it? How it's all gonna work? And so because those things are up in the air and we are gonna most likely need to continue to raise rates going forward, at least some amount each year, but for this upcoming fiscal year, we're not gonna recommend any rate increases to the Enterprise Fund. And I think another thing that is in everyone's minds is the economy right now. And, you know, people are having a difficult time paying the bills as they are. And so rather than kinda add to that stress, this is kind of a year where we're gonna recommend no changes. And again, it'll give staff a little bit of time to look. Randy'd like to look at the infrastructure needs in a little more depth. And so he's gonna be talking to you about that between now and next year. But I'll go through everything. I'm gonna go pretty quick since I'm really not asking you to take any action.
Oh.
And then we can talk. And stop me anytime as we go through this. So and I know...
Henry, sorry to step on you there. The contracted recycling collection services are gonna be requesting a ten percent rate increase. That'll be on your August first agenda. I think that we would be passing along.
Because that's contracted.
That's contracted.
But for your operations for collection, no increase. So, you know, I know everyone here tonight's been through this at least once with me, right? And some multiple times. And the mayor, it seems like we've been doing this for a long time. But I'll go through kind of the background so everyone understands what we look at when we set utility rates. And again, the first study when we started working with you goes all the way back to two thousand and fifteen. And you had come off of a multi-year rate plan then. And there was actually a pause between that multi-year rate plan and when we started up in two thousand and fifteen again. But we look at it annually because, one, you know, and I've said this multiple times, but we know that there's growth on the horizon. The timing of that still can be uncertain until we really get into it. So we're looking constantly at the capital needs. Renewal and replacement is a really important one because not only will we have to fund the facilities to serve new growth, we've gotta keep the existing infrastructure up. So we need to make sure we have funds to continually reinvest, extend the life of those assets so that you have a viable system that works and it's a going concern. We've built up some funds for contingencies. You know, you've got the charter reserve. We've got good fund balances now. And so we wanna make sure that we maintain that, especially, you know, we're vulnerable along the coast here to hurricanes and things like that. And while you get some funding from FEMA, ultimately, in the short run, FEMA's not gonna pay the bills. So we need to make sure and be conscious of your operating reserves and cash on hand. Obviously, operating costs and now it's a little tricky right now because inflation seems to be really rampant. The PSC index that allows private utilities to index up and the CPI are over five percent this year. That's the first time I've seen that in well over a decade, that kind of increase. So we know inflation's up, particularly fuel costs are high. We're not sure, you know, some of this will sustain, I believe, into the future. I'm not a soothsayer, but, you know, but some of these things will moderate. And the other one of concern is construction costs because, you know, there's a lot of projects out there that people are still trying to accomplish. So you're literally competing for the contractors. And they can kind of pick and choose the jobs where they make the most profits. And so those costs are rising and in some cases, pretty dramatically, we've seen. Looking at the actual condition of the assets and making sure that we understand where it's smart to spend the money is something that you do constantly. And that way, we can adapt the plan as that changes. Growth in sales, again, you know, we're seeing in other communities where we've seen a lot of growth. Hopefully, it continues. You know, I guess there are prospects right now for perhaps a recession. So that may cool off some community's growth. But we all know that the future of Edgewater has growth out there. It's just when those developers pull the trigger and really get serious. And so we monitor that carefully. And then finally, you know, along the way, we've tried to keep in mind both financial objectives that we recommend to you as being wise, but also the city has some good policies that you've adopted, and we try to be mindful of that. So this is really the seventh update to your plan that I've been involved with. And, you know, I know this for sure from a fiscal perspective and not because of my involvement, but because of your willingness to look at this carefully every year. You've got a solid financial footing these days. So we looked at the individual enterprise systems. Water, wastewater, reclaimed water is an enterprise in and of itself. Stormwater separately. And then your solid waste, which includes your collection and, as Randy said, your contract recycling. The idea is to hopefully promote the long-term sustainability of the system. We don't wanna be in the mode where we're doing things to overcome problems that occur. We wanna stay ahead of things, know the condition, replace things as needed, and not be reactive. We wanna be more proactive in our planning. And of course, you've got a lot of regulatory requirements. They're ever increasing in the area of stormwater, wastewater treatment. If you do get behind in some of these things, these days, you will hear pretty quickly from DEP. They're ratcheting up the requirements for inspection of stormwater assets, for example, or maintenance of stormwater assets. Yeah, they're, you know, and then on the water and wastewater side, you know, they're talking about making sure you have an inventory of what's out there. So they're gonna, they're gonna, they've taken the position, I believe, in Tallahassee that they're gonna monitor these municipal systems and make sure that we don't defer too much stuff and let it deteriorate. And so we're seeing more of that. And obviously, you've got loans outstanding.
They don't trust us, in other words.
Well, I...
They take care of our own stuff.
I mean, it's not Edgewater.
I realize that.
Okay, but there are communities that will put things off. I've got a client in southeast Florida that has not raised rates in fifteen years.
You're kidding.
Yeah, and, you know, their water plant is forty years old. It's, technology's way out of date. And, you know, they can keep it running, but they can't really sustain for the future. So that's the kind of things that you guys are very competent at dealing with. And, you know, in order to do that, you have to have strong financials. And then you've got outstanding debts, and those lenders have certain requirements of us. So one of the things we do is we try to maintain a minimum balance of ninety days of rate revenue, a target of one-twenty, which is a little more comfortable, but never go below the ninety. And then your charter reserve requires that each enterprise has a balance of fifteen percent of operating expenses, debt service, ongoing department capital, not major capital, but kind of that ongoing stuff. And that is money that, in a pinch, you could access it, but the charter requires it to then be replenished. So the intent is for that to be there as a backstop and give you that sound fiscal...
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Can you, because there's people here that, what's ongoing department capital? Can you explain what that would involve?
Okay, sure, sure. So we talk about operating expenses. And then capital, departmental capital differs from CIP projects in that it's things like your vehicles, your equipment. It's things that go on the books as an asset, but they're fairly short-lived assets. So that's what we refer to as ongoing departmental capital.
Okay, all right, got it.
So, but again, we look at both that target reserve for operations and the charter reserve. We wanna make sure the renewal and replacement fund has an adequate balance. You know, one thing about water and wastewater systems is the weather can impact your revenues in a given year. So we may do all the planning, and you even may have the growth in new households. But if it's a real wet year, you may not have the sales you anticipated. So, but we wanna make sure we have enough funds set aside so that we can continue to do the renewal and replacement, the reinvestment in existing assets so that you don't lose a year because of that. So we have that funded separately. Those monies are placed in that fund, and we monitor that as well. And then you've got debt service coverage requirements. Again, this is where, why we separate out the departmental capital because debt service coverage is your gross revenues from each system, less your operating expenses as defined in the bond resolutions. And that doesn't include capital. It doesn't include interest expense. It's just your cash operating expenses. And then they look at what's left over after you pay those cash operating expenses. And they look at that relative to the level of debt. And so your senior lien bonds, which you still have some out there, require you to have a coverage equal to one. So you have to have enough revenue to pay the senior lien. And then the subordinate debts with SRF, they want you to have a hundred and fifteen percent for every, for every dollar of debt service, they want a dollar fifteen available to pay it. Now, these are minimums, okay? This is a minimum. If you go below these targets, you're in default of the agreement with the lenders. So we shoot for a target of one-hundred and fifty percent because we want the target not to be targeted at the minimum. That being said, the way you build the coverage is, we don't force it. We don't say in the model, put money in there to make coverage. We put money in for renewal and replacement expenditures. And all that helps achieve coverage because your flow of funds in your bond agreement says, first, you pay your operating expenses, then you pay your debt service. Then any money that's left over after that, we can reinvest in the system or you can transfer to the general fund if you so desire. But those monies that we put in the plan for renewal and replacement are after the payment of debt. So therefore, they help you make the coverage. So you've made your coverage targets just because you're doing your infrastructure renewal and replacements properly. And that's what it's really designed to do. We should never come to a point where we have to put money in rates just to make coverage because you should create that coverage through properly reinvesting in the system. So the other thing we like to do where possible is to try to phase impacts over time. Like I said, this year, we're gonna take a break from any rate increases. So we looked at fiscal twenty-two, the current year, through twenty-seven projected. Again, we looked at all the systems. We updated all those things we normally look at, sales, growth, revenue. We study the most recent year to see where we are. We look at your budget, and I can tell you that the staff is actively involved as we prepare these studies, and they're preparing their budget for upcoming twenty-three, for example. They're also looking at where they can cut things. So this isn't just take whatever the wish list and fund it. This is an exercise that everyone goes through to try to make sure that what they're asking for is the essential needs of the system. Obviously, the capital improvement program and the funding plan for that, as I said, that's, we're gonna be reexamining that in the next year. So to just make sure we're spending the money in the right areas. And again, a big one is the new Ops Center, how we can get that funded and phased in so that it doesn't have too dramatic an impact on rates. And then the debt service is something that's outstanding. However, you know, if it's a significant project, that it doesn't make sense. You know, we can't buy a house cash. So if it's a big project, capital project, we've used where appropriate. We've assumed that you're gonna borrow money. And the lender of choice is the Florida Department of Environmental Protection State Revolving Loan Fund. For wastewater projects, clean water and stormwater, those borrowing rates are less than one percent interest. For water, they're in the low twos right now, but that's the best money you can get. It is a shorter amortization period than bonds. Bonds are usually thirty-year. But what, at any point in time that I look at it, typically, the debt service from a thirty-year bond is about equal to the SRF, except for wastewater. SRF is even cheaper on a twenty-year basis. So what that really is telling you is by using SRF, you're saving one-third of the debt service because if you're paying the same amount for thirty years versus twenty, you're actually saving quite a bit of money to use SRF.
We wanna do that whenever we can.
Yes. And that's what the program's for. Now, again, once we look at all this, we look at the adequacy of rates and recommend rate adjustments. So right now, we're looking at moderate account growth. This is higher than what we've seen in the past. So we are getting more comfortable. But we're looking at two-hundred and fifty residential accounts that are occurring this year. And then beyond that, we're looking at, over time, it drops down to finally about seventy-five accounts a year. So we're expecting some growth in the near term. And then we're assuming it's gonna kind of level back off as some of these projects come online. And staff works with us to help us understand what projects are out there and what their timing might look like. And then as far as the commercial sector, this has been pretty constant for a while. We're looking at about five new accounts per year on the commercial side. So that equates to a growth rate of one to one-point-two percent. A little higher in the short run, a little closer to one percent as you get further out in time.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
With the growth, would that bring down the utility rates or would it raise the utility rates?
Okay, so that's a very good question.
Because me and Mr. Erby read around the other day, and I think we went to seventeen places. We've got so many subdivisions going on right now. We're gonna double our population, but it's coming in phases. Out west, during Park North, there's gonna be eighty-five hundred homes. On the south, there's gonna be roughly thirteen hundred homes. And on the Volco Road, that's eight thousand more homes. We're just, we're doing, in progress right now is the old horse farm. I forget the name of that one.
Yeah.
We've got two going on Mission Road. We've got another one going behind Florida Shores, which they're doing work right now and building houses. And we've got townhomes going in at the corner of Air Park and Silver Palm. How many townhomes are going in there? I forget. Hundred? I forget. And let me see. We went out to the place on Glencoe Road where they're building million-dollar homes. And they're building them in there just...
Liberty Village.
Just, huh?
Liberty Village.
Yeah, Liberty Village. I think that's what it's called. And they're building them in there like it's no stop. So what I'm asking you, are you complicating those in your figures?
So a lot of that, those are big growth projects, and that's what I was alluding to earlier. We know this is on the horizon. So we're looking at five-year snapshots. And we really have, we have some of the near-term projects that are active in here, but we don't have those ones, those big ones that are a little further out factored in yet. But when we look at whether it impacts rates, it depends on your current availability of capacity to serve the growth. And so as long as you've got some margin in the treatment capacity of your plants, it's gonna help. And then at some point, you're gonna have to expand those facilities. And depending on the nature of the plants themselves, sometimes, and I'll let Randy speak to this, but if you can add to a wastewater plant without having to build a second plant, for example, at the margin, that's cheaper than the average cost of the original plant because you're adding some more treatment. So it really, what we probably need to do at some point to answer the questions you're asking is maybe look at a little longer horizon. And one of the things Randy's doing that he shared with me is he's gonna be looking at those capital needs longer term. And then once we get that, we can have a better discussion about it because it really depends on, you know, how long you can... Now, sanitation, that kind of growth is gonna help you, I think, because you're gonna have to add some new trucks for pickup. But your administrative costs, a lot of your costs that, you know, are common to the enterprise will get spread over more accounts.
So you think that the overall growth, you think the utilities will go down?
No, sir.
No, sir?
Not if we have to expand plants when we get there.
Well, the previous utility director promised me or assured me there was enough water. I think we have, what, thirteen wells? But we're gonna, we're in the process of building another treatment plant at Dale Street, right, Mr. Randy?
No, so the Dale Street, in order to expand the wastewater plant, which is currently two-point-seven-five million gallons per day capacity, it flows just under two-point-oh, you know, one-point-six, that kind of ballpark. When we need to expand that, we're gonna need to make real estate for it at the Mango Tree, what's now the Public Works Facility. So we would need to move those operations out to our Dale Street property in order to have the real estate available to expand it there.
You're gonna expand the wastewater treatment plant here?
Right, on the same site, just like what Henry was saying.
But we are planning on doing that.
Yeah, it's not in the five-year rate horizon, but it's gonna get there pretty soon.
Okay.
Well, and then just for the sake of the record, our, the water, not the water treatment, but the waters that we're able to maintain daily, can you use them to that?
So our water treatment plant is at five-point-oh million gallons per day, and we flow right around two-point-oh.
So we have plenty of water?
Plenty of water capacity, and we have since nineteen ninety-two.
For the record.
So that's something to keep in your heads, too. That's a thirty-year-old plant right there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's...
So, and we've got one other tool in our toolkit that helps with all this. And we're gonna, we don't do this every year, but we're gonna look at your impact fees that you charge new development. And it's a timing issue because we, you've gotta build the capacity ahead of the growth so it's there for the growth. At the same time, you're likely to use some kind of debt instrument to finance it over time because that's the right thing to do. And we can pledge those impact fees for payment of those debts. So given if we set the impact fees properly, that will help mitigate the impact of growth on rates. Where it gets difficult, my client over in Lakeland, they came upon a period where they were relying heavily on impact fees to pay debts for plant expansions that they were growing very rapidly, seeing a lot of income from those fees, using them to pay debt and hold rates down, and then the growth stopped kind of abruptly on them. And so the debt service is still there. So again, it's, growth is a double-edged sword. In most cases, it's good. You know, I would tell you the systems I work with down in southeast Florida that are built out struggle more than the growth systems do to keep reasonable rates over time because they can't spread their costs over more units anymore. They're built out. But a lot of it depends on your current situation. Like I said, water sounds like it's in better shape. And when Randy gets these master plans done, we'll take a look at a little longer forecast, and we'll see. Plus, we'll be able to cost out what the impact fee should be. The idea is to do our best to make sure growth pays its own way. But, you know, inflation and other factors are gonna cause rates to continue to rise, unfortunately.
The basis of my question is, with all the growth that I just told you about coming to Edgewater, in your prediction, is our utility bill gonna go up because of that or go down or stay the same?
So can I defer that answer until we have a little more information? I mean, again, it's a complicated question.
I know that. I know that, but we're all worried about it.
And I, yes. Now, again, I'll say this, too. Larger systems generally benefit from economies of scale. So there's some benefits for being bigger, but it just, it really depends. The biggest impact is, one, we gotta make sure we get out ahead of the growth and get the impact fees set properly. And then, two, what it's gonna take to expand that wastewater plant at the margin compared to the debt on it today, for example, and the operating costs today. And one other thing that gets thrown in here that's kind of hard to see is what the regulations require you to do in terms of new treatment because that would impact, you're gonna accommodate that when you expand your plant. You're gonna use more modern technologies, better treatment. But you would have likely had to do that at some point anyway for existing, even if you weren't growing because, again, the regulators are looking at, you know, less impact on our groundwater, cleaner water, and all those have to be accommodated. The good time to do that's when you're expanding your plants to use better technologies. But if you will, I just don't wanna give you an answer off the cuff and be wrong. I'd like to study it more. And quite frankly, in this five-year plan, we have not had a chance to address those things quite yet. They're a little beyond the five-year horizon.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and just not to spook people, I think a lot of the growth that we talked about tonight in the next five years is not a great reality. You know, a piece of land can have a PUD on it, and it's a thirty-year contract, just for those who are listening, and it not be built in twenty-five years. So I think in the next five years, when we're looking at rates and we're looking at the possibility of growth, I don't think the reality of substantial growth is there. I just don't.
Well, and what's driving your rates in the near term is cost inflation?
Right.
And the need to do the right level of renewal and replacement on existing assets. And that's not the responsibility of new growth, so.
And you have a good point there because the subdivision on Roberts Road, I remember getting the city manager to take me down there and ride me through there. And that was, and I approved that in two thousand and six.
Right, so if that was approved in two thousand and six and we're not building until twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Right.
Obviously, we can have a contract on a piece of land and it not being built for twenty years down the road.
And it's coming in phases. The Volco Road, they assured me it's coming in phases because once they complete the north side of Volco Road, they're gonna get to the south side of Volco Road, Fario Road. And that's gonna come in phases. How many phases, does anybody remember? Five phases? And then out west, that's gonna be eighty-five hundred homes.
I think that was sixty-six hundred.
Six, that's right, they lowered it.
And that was in like four or five, four or five phases as well? And I just wanted to make it clear.
And that's gonna be in phases.
That, that this growth isn't.
So as long as they're doing it in phases, the city of Edgewater will be able to keep up.
Well, and one other thing, go ahead.
We're having a lot of growth right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With all these houses that are being, any place you go, as Mike said, their homes are going up. And they gotta make impacts on it.
I've never seen anything like it in my life. I talked to a realtor the other day, and it used to be if you sold a piece, a house for, say you wanted two twenty, your offer would be two hundred and then you'd make some in between. A realtor told me the other day that he had a house listed on, on four forty-two for two fifty, getting ready to sign the papers, and somebody come in there and offered him two sixty. And before that deal was done, they offered him two seventy five, you know? And was the highest bidder, you know? I mean, we're building them like crazy, but we can't, you know, get enough of them, you know?
We went and looked at some houses the other day. And I can't remember the development, but it's a fairly new one. And the houses are starting now at over three hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars.
No, this, where we looked, they said they start at three hundred thousand. That's where they start.
I believe it.
So that's gonna slow down a little bit of growth because sooner or later, people are gonna run out of money to move down here.
So the other thing you do as well, to give you some comfort that you do have some things working for you is those projects that might be six thousand homes, that's like really new green space development, they're usually not contiguous to the system. Well, it may be four phases, but you don't wanna build four different sizes of transmission line for phase one, two, three, and four. Well, it's appropriate there to have the developer pay for that line. You might give them some impact fee credits against the transmission portion of the impact fee, but they, you know, you've gotta make sure these folks are real because you don't wanna build, you don't want the city to build the line and then only phase one happens. And you've got way too much capacity in that line. So the communities right now that are seeing really like Mount Dora and places that the growth is just overwhelming them, Claremont just did a deal. They're making the builders build a lot of that infrastructure. And in Groveland, they have even had them build the treatment plant. Okay, so, so there's things you can do because, believe me, they're gonna make a lot of money off these homes, these builders. So you just have to approach it, you know, very cautiously and use all the tools you have at your disposal.
Thank you, sir. That was a lengthy question, but I think.
Well, it's an important one.
Yes, very important, and I think we're trying to make the systems at Edgewater feel better. Go ahead.
Okay, so just in front of you, I'm gonna go over the water wastewater projections that we are looking at now. On this slide, you'll see last year's projections for water was four percent for twenty-three, followed by three threes, and four percent for wastewater, followed by three threes. So what we're seeing the path look like now, and again, we're hoping to continue to work on this, but this year, none, no increase, so we're foregoing the four percents. And then slightly higher increases each thereafter at three and a half. So that's kind of what we're seeing on the water wastewater side. And again, I really, we really would like to keep it in that range, close to the rate of inflation. The projected bills then are on the next page. But again, for the proposed rates, there's no increase in the water and wastewater bills. So the other thing, the other benefit of taking this pause is we get a chance to look more carefully at how we're spending the money and where it needs to be spent. But also, I can assure you that other utilities aren't pausing. So we're gonna give us a chance to let the others catch up to us a little bit. Because our rates on this chart show you, on the water wastewater, you're kind of at the high end. But most of these other systems are implementing rate increases every year. And I can tell you that I'm seeing some of the largest rate increases we've recommended in a long time for the upcoming period of time. So again, hopefully you can move a little bit, be a little bit more competitive by taking that pause for a year. Example, New Smyrna Beach Utilities Commission, they have very low water wastewater rates, but they've got already programmed in rate increases higher than what you have. So over time, you're gonna move, they're gonna move up faster than you're going to move up, so.
And I think that people have to realize that, you know, you hear everybody talking about the environment, the Indian River, and I'm a proponent of all the above. But in the city of Edgewater, only has eighty-four septic tanks. Now, so the rest of the people, when they flush that toilet, where they're paying for the water and the wastewater plant. So anyway, I mean, we're doing our part for the environment. I think you can add that in there. If you want quality of life, you're gonna have to pay for it, you know? That's the way I look at it.
Well, again, and I'm not here to talk about New Smyrna, but they have areas where they're, your folks, you don't have a lot of septics. They've got areas that in addition to the utility bills, they're paying an assessment because they're having to take this septics offline and convert it over to wastewater treatment from your central system. And so in addition to their utility bill, those neighborhoods like over near Rays Creek, they're paying pretty significant assessments each year on top of their bill.
I hope so because most of that beachside over there is on septic.
Yeah, so, but they're addressing that, and it's gonna be impactful.
And if that's not leaking into our river, you know, I don't know what is, but anyway.
So the next chart is just a picture of what we've been talking about. It breaks down the kinds of expenditures, and it shows you the current rates versus the proposed rate path. But again, we're not asking you to make any change this year. On page thirteen of your handout, we've got the capital improvement program. And obviously, the big numbers are out in twenty twenty-five. That, but other than that, we're still, we're still spending, you know, in the next year, over seven million dollars on capital. So the more normal numbers going forward are about four million a year roughly, and then we've got the one big year.
So the next, did you say next seven years?
No, I said, this on page thirteen, that's, it shows you the capital spending that's built into the plan.
You'll be out in twenty twenty-four.
But I still live there and have to pay the bills. And don't say I'm out.
So Randy, that.
I'm glad I didn't gotta run it twenty twenty-four.
So the big dollars, and that's one, again, that staff is still developing strategies for. The twenty million dollar year, that's when the new facility for your public services is in the plan.
Oh, okay, so they, they're projecting to twenty twenty-five is when we're gonna have the new facilities? Wow, it's moving pretty fast.
That's the current path, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, so the next chart just shows you that you have significant reserves today, and they're in excess of our targets. And that's why we're able to take the pause in twenty-three. We can pay for some of the capital, but money ratepayers have already paid. So the beauty of this is, you know, if you do have a good year, it's not like you take the money and run. It stays in the enterprise, so we use it. So we're using the reserves currently on hand to help spread the rates out a little more. And you can see, we're always trying to make sure that we meet our reserve targets. The next one just shows the Renewal and Replacement Fund. This is a little more complicated. The cash balances are represented by the area in yellow. The amount we put in there each year is the blue bars, and then the amount we spend out is the red. So it's a combination of making sure each year we put some in, but also using some of the reserves that are built up so that we don't impact rates more than we need to. And you do have a requirement to put in there five percent of system fixed assets annually, and that's in your bond resolution. So that's that represents that dash line, the blue dash line. So again, the lenders are not only trying to protect the fact that you pay them back, but they're trying to make sure you fund adequately your needs.
And we can future use them to.
So, yeah. So the next chart just shows you where we're at on the charter reserve balances, and we've achieved our goal. We were, a couple of years ago, we were a little shy on some of them. And I think, you know, we're right on target now to maintain those required charter reserve balances. The next chart, real quickly, just shows all your sources of funds. And, you know, don't let that decline worry you because it's well above the requirement, so. I'm gonna jump now to the coverage on nineteen. We talked about the cash reserves pretty, pretty well. So on nineteen, just shows you what your coverages are for the senior lien debt, what you're achieving versus the requirement. So you're more than adequate there. On page twenty, the subordinate debt, which gets paid after senior lien debt, you're well above the requirements there. And as I said, this is really being driven by the R and R funds that are built into the revenue requirements. Your all-in debt coverage of one fifty, we're exceeding that. So in terms of compliance with lenders, the water wastewater system is doing fine. So let's look real quick at stormwater. Again, we talk about stormwater generally in dollars per month, month per bill. But just to put it in a simple summary, you can see before we were looking at the base and the assessment fee being about three point eight five percent in twenty-three. Now we're gonna recommend zero. Then it went down to three point seven and eventually dropped down. And here, by delaying, we're gonna be basically on the same path but delayed. But this is one area where we've hopefully counted on grants, and we're gonna continue to explore opportunities for grants. Because stormwater, there are grant funds available. So again, this will probably look different the next time we look at it, hopefully, from whatever your capital needs are, from Randy's assessment to whatever kind of grant funding we can achieve. So right now, the monthly residential bill is at thirteen dollars total for stormwater. By twenty twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, it would be up two dollars. At fifteen, you're a coastal community. Palm Coast, for example, they're right at about twenty now, and they've, they're looking to update their rates. So, you know, for coastal communities, this is where you're at, is becoming more the norm. Central Florida, the rates are lower, but they don't, you know, they've got lakes to protect, but they don't have rivers and estuaries and lagoons to protect.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, Randy?
Sure.
How many outflows do we have into the Indian River stormwater? Remind me.
As in piped outfalls, piped and ditch outfalls? Is that what you mean? You ask this kind of question all the time, Mr. Mayor.
I know, and I forgot.
Let's just say it's around nine or so.
I thought it was eleven, but anyway, and we've got some with, of the, what do you call them? Built in already.
Yeah, so we have three or four that have baffle boxes and some other that type of technology.
We got four baffle boxes?
I'm thinking of four right off the top of my head.
What I'm asking you is just.
There might be five.
Enough money to create some more baffle boxes?
We do have the stormwater.
Or you have that in your budget?
Are programmed in with a, I'll say, fairly optimistic grant expectation on the funding. Some of those projects, the way the master plan was written ten or so years ago, they've changed how they like the different things and the way those projects were envisioned. I'll just say, we lost a competitive grant project.
The last time I talked to Brenda, she was not really excited about how the baffle boxes were working. Is there a plan to upgrade that or?
Yeah, we're gonna need to take a look at that. We're gonna need to figure out how those that we've already done, we're gonna leave in place. But the new ones that we build, we've gotta change what's shown in the master plan. We're gonna propose slightly different projects to meet what's currently the funding. Because from our side, from the grant funding perspective, they're strictly looking at water quality improvement. From our side, we have to balance that also with where can we get the water quantity control that the residents need and require. So we need to also focus from the, you know, perspective of where can we put collection systems and management systems that deal with the quantity, not just the quality.
So my question to you is, do you think that's gonna be enough money to acquire that objective?
That's, that's part of what we're looking at. And something that we've kind of been discussing internally that I don't have it fully put together to bring to you as a comprehensive master plan update. We're not at that point yet. So for the projects that we have put in there, there's a realistic dollar amount based on the cost estimates that were available at that time. You know how construction costs are right now?
Right.
Hopefully, they'll level out.
Yeah, I mean, when you talk to people, they're worried about the environment. But, you know, to protect the environment, you've gotta cough up that money.
Yeah.
So, so the baffle boxes are an important capital item in stormwater. The drainage improvements are essential. But a big part of stormwater also is maintenance, more so than water wastewater in some respects. Because if you're not maintaining the inlets and all those things properly, then you, your structures don't work right.
Right.
So, so it's a, it's, that's where DEP is really upping the, upping the game is making sure we're maintaining these things properly because a lot of them, over the years, have been neglected. And it's, the facility's there, it's just not working properly because the inlet's blocked or it's crushed down on the roadway and needs to be redone. And so it's a real combination in stormwater of maintaining it properly and doing all that as well as the water quality improvements. And you do have areas where you still have to do drainage improvements as well. Hopefully, those are long-lived assets. So once we get past that, it'll be more of a maintenance issue than new capital.
Yeah.
And of course, the new neighborhoods you're talking about, the standards they're gonna have to build too for drainage are gonna be much higher than a lot of the community that's out there today. And they will be responsible for building that.
Yeah, and we went into depth on that for those listening. On the new development out west of ninety-five, they were gonna build forty-foot lots. And I was very concerned, how are we gonna put enough, you know, reclaimed water on forty-foot lots? And so we came to an agreement, they're gonna build a, like a wildlife wet park out there. We've already got the five million dollar pipeline going out there to ship the treated wastewater out there. And they're gonna put it in the wildlife park where they're gonna, it's gonna be part of the development where the people can view the wildlife, the birds, and whatever lives in it.
And recharge the aquifer.
Yes, so anyway, we're working on that, too.
So Titusville has a project similar to that where a lot of their affluent that they used to put in the Indian River now goes to bodies of water where it's going in and helping recharge the aquifer.
Yes.
And through natural treatment. So the next page twenty-five shows you the rate comparison that I was talking about. And again, a lot of these are constantly being updated. And Palm Coast, again, what they faced is when Irma came through, a lot of their drainage infrastructure just collapsed because it was so rusty and old. So they're having to deal with that. Plus, they're trying to increase their maintenance levels of service. So they wanna do more work on their canals and swales and ditches. And so that's why they're up there. So I'm gonna take you, well, so the capital plan, and it shows here on the rate path that we are looking at using reserves and hopefully grants to pay for some of these projects. The funding right now is proposed to be as high as seventy percent grant funding. That's why we're gonna work hard on trying to get as many as we can. That's why we're going to work hard on trying to get as many as we can. And then we've got some debt-funded projects in there, and then the rate revenue projects are in, in the dark blue area, about five point seven million directly from rates, nineteen million from grants, and about two point eight million from a, from a, an SRF loan. And then the next chart on twenty-eight just shows the timing of those stormwater expenditures. So again, one of the reasons we're able to get a lot of this done from reserves and such, if you look on page twenty-nine, the operating fund has some good cash balances. We're going to use those to not only avoid a rate increase next year, but to help fund a lot of our capital needs. And then the charter reserve fund balance does dip below a little bit, but, you know, we'll, it over time will maintain it, and currently, it's right on target. So why don't we jump, because debt service coverage is kind of not real meaningful on the, the stormwater system. So I'd like to take you now to solid waste. That starts on page thirty-three. And here, the solid waste rate increases, as forecasted previously, were three percent a year. And, you know, we are seeing large increases in our recycling service, and those are the adjustments that are shown. The eight point seven five percent are adjustments to recycling and, collection and recycling, and that's a contract service. So, you know, we can manage that to some degree, but we don't do that internally, so we're, we're kind of a subject to the marketplace on recycling, and the increases are up largely because of that recycling service cost being up.
So just to confirm again, too, just for the record, so we see the eight point seven five percent in recycling. If that's a contracted service, we're effectively being told that the rate will be by a private company?
It's, it's, it's both, it's both, but a lot of it's, the recycling is the bigger share of the increase.
Correct, no, I understand that, I just wanted to, for the record, but yes, thank you.
And I know, again, we're still implementing some of the operational improvements that were recommended a couple of years ago, and Randy's continuing to look at ways he can perhaps positively impact the rates.
We've got rates coming up left and right here.
Yeah, so page thirty-five just shows you that we're at twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents for, for current service, and, and we'll stay at that. Again, as to where it goes in the future, it, it is continuing to trend upward, but this is one I think Randy would tell you he wants to work more on, try to change that path in the future.
Can I interrupt you? How are the tipper trucks working? I know we had a problem with accumulated workman's comp claims, and that's why we went to the tipper trucks. How, how are they working, and how are the workman's comp?
They're working really good. We, just for, let's see, I guess it's been about a month, maybe two months ago, had our first workers' comp case in the solid waste division in the past three years or however long it's been.
That's good, that's good.
So...
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, sorry for that individual that experienced it, but, you know, we used to see that, as you know, a lot more frequently when we were relying on the backs and shoulders, you know, now we're relying on the mechanical tippers a whole lot more.
Yes. Go ahead, sir, thank you.
Sure, chart thirty-seven just shows you your rate increase, and, you know, again, over on this coast, these rates are on the rise. I am also working with the city of Port Orange, so I know, again, that no rates in the utility world today are staying constant, but you are at the high end, although Hunts Inlet's right there with you right now for your total solid waste bill. So again, I've got more details on the capital plan here, but I think, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of your time going through things that are down the road and may change. The big takeaway here is we are in pretty good shape, so we're going to take a pause, let, let, see where the economy heads, see where the growth heads, see what your capital needs really need to be in the longer run. You haven't taken a real in-depth look at that in a while, so we'll probably be able to answer some of your questions in more depth as those activities take place. So that's, that's what I have for, for tonight.
Who's next, Mr. Irving?
Steve Bridgett.
We sure appreciate your time this afternoon. I believe Henry here has gone through the, the good news and the bulk of the utility rates. I'm just going to kind of go back through, highlight the utility rate projection, review the proposed enterprise fund budget, staffing request, capital outlay, capital projects. This is a working budget, we're going to be fine-tuning between now and September, but this will give you some of the highlights this evening on what is going into the proposed budget for FY twenty-three for the utilities. So for fiscal year twenty-three, for budget overview, the enterprise funds, as you've heard this evening, we're not proposing any change for water and sewer rates. Solid waste, we're not proposing any changes for the refuse. The recycling is driven by contract costs, so there may be a ten percent increase there. And what that looks like, solid waste is currently at twenty-five forty-one a month residential. Recycling is at four dollars and seventy-four cents a month. That would be increasing to five twenty-one if there's a ten percent increase, or an increase of five dollars and sixty-four cents annually. Stormwater currently at thirteen dollars a month, not proposing an increase. For water and sewer, the revenues, rate change, while we are holding the revenues or the rates flat, the charges for service for the revenue has increased or is expected to increase by approximately two hundred and seventy-six thousand, and that is in relation to the growth that was discussed here this evening. Grant funding within the water and sewer fund, we're looking at a hazard mitigation grant program, safe room at the wastewater treatment plant with hardening for the ops building, looking at approximately twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty in grant funding. The water and sewer had a handful of requested positions, again, in trying to hold things constant for a year. The requested positions were not included in the FY twenty-three proposed budget, but just to share full transparency, water quality technician, plant mechanic at the wastewater treatment plant, two wastewater maintenance techs, and two distribution system operators, a grand total of three hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. For the water and sewer operating expenses, we did project a, anticipated five percent wage increase. Majority of the operating expenses had inflationary increases. As Henry alluded to, there was very great CPI increases throughout the nation, so plus or minus six percent, depending on looking at fuel or the various operating lines. Transfers to the renewal and replacement projects actually decreased for the upcoming year of approximately eight point nine million. Again, it's a fluctuation, timing of the various capital projects that are ongoing throughout the city. The current outstanding debt for water and sewer fund is twelve million nine hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine, which includes the listed state, state revolving fund from two thousand twelve wastewater treatment plant, capital improvement note from two thousand fourteen, the utilities system refunding note from two thousand sixteen, and SRF reclaim extension. The water and sewer capital outlay included in the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget includes a VACcon truck that is refurbished for one hundred thousand, a pickup truck for the waste, the water treatment plant, trailer-mounted lateral rotor, de-watering system, total requested included of two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Excuse me, can I just ask a question? I'm illiterate when it comes to some of these things. What is a trailer-mounted lateral rotor? What is that?
So what that is, it's a, are you familiar with what our VAC truck looks like?
No.
Okay, it's a big old truck with a lot of tanks and pumps and all that on it. The trailer-mounted lateral rotor is basically, it looks a lot more like, it, it has similar functions to what our VAC truck does, but it looks more like one of those mobile car detailing setups where it's pretty much a water tank with a pump and various hoses and attachments that can...
And what does it do?
Uh, we can use it for things such as clearing blockages in pipes, cleaning out ends of culvert pipes if, you know, stormwater wanted to use it. Most of, when we get callouts, especially on our wastewater collections, you know, after our callouts, they're one of two things, either a lift station's without power and, you know, we need to hook up a generator, or there's a blockage somewhere and we need to clear it. This would give us a, a smaller, more nimble piece of equipment, trailer-mounted piece of equipment, to get in there and clear those kinds of blockages without having to get the big VAC truck.
You realize what the VAC truck does?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, is this, because we had a leak, a, a leak in our dri- part of our driveway coming off of Riverside there, and they brought a big truck out there and fixed it. Is that what this would be used for, something like that?
When was that?
No, that would, that'd been the VAC truck.
It probably was.
Because see, when they dig the hole, they got to suck the, the leak is coming.
Right.
So they got to suck that water out where they can dig the hole to find the leak, and then fix the leak, sucking the water out.
Turned out the leak was coming from Riverside Drive, but it backwashed up to, to my house, I guess, I don't know. All right, I'm just, I'm going to have to go out there and have a, have a, you take me through all the different...
Be very glad to. Let me know your availability, we'll be glad to set it up.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that.
And the, the rotor goes at people's culverts that has blockage, so the drainage can properly flow.
Okay, okay. We didn't know we were going to have to answer technical questions about the equipment, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, got that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just don't know what it was.
I like talking about the tools.
Okay.
I like seeing them in action.
And I'll stick with the numbers and let him explain the tools, so.
Right.
Total included, two hundred and fifteen thousand for the equipment that's included in the proposed budget. Requested that was not included was a new VACcon truck for six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, it's a big piece of equipment. So, very complicated.
The water and sewer R and R or renewal and replacement fund, that is what Henry was referring to. We have a fund that all of the capital projects, we try to maintain and track there. We have capital projects that are to maintain, you know, ongoing infrastructure needs, one point seven million. Lift station refurbishments, we're looking at three each year at approximately three hundred thousand, so nine hundred thousand is programmed into the fiscal year twenty-three budget. The Park Avenue and US One Water Main relocation for seven hundred and fifty thousand. The THM precursor removal, phase one, at the water treatment plant, this is one of the SRF or state revolving fund loaned, project funded, five hundred thousand. Two-inch water line replacements at five hundred thousand. A safe room and wind retrofit, the wastewater treatment plant building, which would be funded partially through HMGP. We're expecting thirty-five thousand dollar cost, but the twenty-six two hundred and fifty in grant funding to help offset that. The FlexNet smart water meter network, we're still ongoing with the meter replacement, so four hundred and ninety-two thousand there. So we're looking at approximately four point nine million in capital projects coming out of the R and R fund. Some of the funding, again, the HMGP for the safe room for twenty-six thousand, state revolving loan fund for five hundred thousand, and the other portion is all related to rate funded, you know, pulling up from reserves to fund some of these projects. For the solid waste fund, again, you know, we're not looking to raise any of the rates. We are looking at an approximate ten thousand in revenue increase as it relates to the increase in houses and accounts that are coming online. Recycling, we're anticipating a ten percent increase because it's contracted services, and then a slight increase again in the number of accounts, so approximately fifty thousand on those items. For the solid waste expenses, we're looking at operating expenses, salaries, benefits, and contract staffing, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand increase in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. The requested equipment operator that was not included in the proposed, approximately fifty-five thousand. Capital outlay increased approximately one hundred and forty-two thousand. We're looking to purchase two refuse trucks. Originally, we were requesting three, estimated four hundred thousand each, so currently eight hundred thousand for two refuse trucks in the fiscal year twenty-three proposed. Total outstanding debt for this fund is six hundred and three thousand related to vehicle financing back in twenty-twenty.
That's in addition to the truck that we're buying?
That is correct.
Okay, good, yep.
So a, a garbage truck costs as much as a fire engine?
No.
It's close.
It's close. Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, stormwater fund revenue, again, we're looking to hold the rates flat one year. Increase in the fees, approximately thirty thousand, again, new, new construction, new accounts. FDEP grant for New Hampshire, New York, that's pending approval, approximately seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We're looking at grants for Evergreen Avenue Stormwater, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred, and the HMGP grant, Cheetah Drive acquisition, twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty. Stormwater expenses, we're seeing a decrease in the repairs and maintenance lines of a hundred thousand. Capital outlay, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one ninety-three decrease. Transfers to capital projects, one point nine million decrease. The capital outlay that is included in the fiscal year twenty-three includes a front-end loader estimated at a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and the outstanding debt for this particular fund is at ninety-six thousand related to the capital improvement note of two thousand fourteen. Stormwater projects that are programmed into the fiscal year twenty-three budget include the New York, New Hampshire, Fernald, a hundred percent grant funded, if all goes well, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The stormwater canal rehab, Florida shores, phase one, three hundred thousand. Evergreen Avenue stormwater improvements, seventy percent grant funded at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Stormwater pipelining of a hundred thousand. Acquisition of Cheetah Drive, phase one, eighty percent grant funded at thirty-two thousand three thirteen. And then additional projects to maintain the infrastructure of the system, fifty thousand. So again, some of these are anticipated to be grant funded, approximately nine hundred ninety-two thousand four fifty. The remaining would be funded by rates, so five hundred and thirty-six thousand eight sixty-three.
So the, I'm sorry, did you go?
I just wanted to know what this acquisition of Cheetah Drive is exactly.
There's a frequently flooded property on Cheetah Drive. I believe it's, it's either one-two-five Cheetah Drive or one-two-nine Cheetah Drive, somewhere like that, and it's similar to the four-oh-five Hard Avenue property. It's a frequently flooded residence that we have, we listed on the LMS, the local mitigation strategy for acquisition, using this HMGP funds, grant funds. It's an alphabet suit.
What are we going to do when we get it?
We're going to acquire the property, demolish the house, turn it into essentially a...
Oh, there's a house on it.
Yeah, turn it into a retention fund.
We've done that before, make a stormwater farm.
And just like with the Hard Avenue property, we're in the process of, we've already been awarded the grant, we're in the process of finalizing the paperwork for a fourteen million dollar grant for that whole G-two, G-eleven canal service area, and the acquisition and the demolition and all that of that Cheetah property will be part of that G-two canal project.
That's the first time I've seen it, that's why I wanted to ask about it.
It's been years in the making.
You were going so fast, the water plant on Park Avenue, what are we doing with that? Park...
Oh, the water, yeah, the Park Avenue Water Main relocation.
The, okay, the Park Avenue and US One Water Main relocation?
No, 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 the water plant on...
Actually, plant on Park Avenue.
Okay.
On Park Avenue.
So...
That used to be our water plant.
So right now, that's under design to build a new pump house for that. That's still using the old pump house from back when that was a water plant, and frankly, they're worn out. So we've got it under design to build a new pump house on the west side of that tank.
Well, we got to spew stuff to property a little bit.
We're going to demolish what's on the east side of that tank and make it a green field so that, yeah, we'll use it as, you know, staging a storage area.
I talked to Mr. Irving about it the other day.
I'm glad you asked.
That's a, that's a mess.
Yep.
You're coming into Edgewater, pardon me.
We're going to paint it too.
Okay. I mean, I mean, we, we made Park Avenue coming to Edgewater beautiful.
Yep.
You know, and we got to pass that, you know, so.
I was wondering about that too, because I've, every time I go by it, I think about it.
You passed it.
I apologize.
Sorry, but you were going so fast, I didn't want to interrupt you, but go ahead.
And Randy, the stormwater canal rehab in Florida shores, that's the hardening of all those stormwater canals.
That's right.
Throughout Florida shores, yeah, so.
Yep.
That's an exciting project to be able to...
Yes, it is.
That's an exciting project to be able to reinforce those, yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah, I'm very excited that we have it under design right now.
And that's grant, that's grant funded?
No, that's rate funded.
Or is that, we're funding that, okay.
Yep.
No worries, I apologize if I was going too fast. I promise that.
You what?
I didn't even have a milkshake for lunch, I was trying to make sure I didn't speed through.
He was just the mayor, he was going too, he fell and hurt himself the other day.
I, I'm a little bit slow.
Yeah, his head a little bit.
So, let me sum it up for you. Um, again, we are fine-tuning between now and, and the final budget, um, for September, but currently, in the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, you're looking at thirty million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, uh, in the various enterprise funds, which includes the water and sewer fund, renewal and replacement, refuses, stormwater, stormwater capital projects, uh, listed out here for you this evening. Up and coming budget workshops and public hearing dates, um, budget workshop for the governmental funds, uh, general funds, special revenue, that, that, um, sort of thing. July eighteenth at four-thirty PM. We have a council meeting on the proposed millage, July twenty-fifth at six PM. Tentative budget workshop, August twenty-second at four-thirty PM. And then we have our two public hearings in September on the twelfth and twenty-sixth, both at six PM. So, if you have any questions.
Well, I, I really like the idea of getting this, what we can expect from the budget, what you're putting in there, and, and a little bit more detailed, and I like it getting ahead of it, you know, gives us time to really think.
Yeah, Mr. Erby was bragging on you the other day, said you did a really, really good job balancing the budget, and told me some more figures, so, I'm, I'm very, very pleased, so.
Oh, I can only do my job with the help of all the staff members. I'm truly blessed to be working with everybody that I work with, so.
Well, you can give 'em my compliments.
Will do.
Thank you, folks.
Are we done?
I don't know, I was just saying thank you.
Oh.
I think that's all we have, so.
I thought you were saying thank you, okay.
Just thanking them for their time.
Any questions?
No, I think we asked a lot of them as we went, didn't we?
And I'm really glad to see some, um, up and running council people in the audience, though, they know what's going on.
What's coming on? Yeah, it's not all fun and games, it's...
Yeah, I hope you're good in math.
Okay, is there anything else? Are we done?
We're done.
Oh, wow, I thought this was gonna take a long time. Not too bad.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn. Thank you all very much.